Second time, it's a public hearing, ordinance 822. An ordinance authorized for swing type of sale, chapter forty-four of the laws of South Carolina, nineteen seventy-six, as amended. The execution delivered an infrastructure credit under the Marlborough County South Carolina and the company now is in the county as Project Feather, which includes a grant of certain special source revenue credits. An amendment to the existing being moved of the add along taxes agreement between the county and Project Feather to revive or extension of the investment period area. An amendment to another existing being moved of the add along taxes agreement between the county and Project Feather to revive or extension of the term of the agreement and other related matters. Mr. chairman?
Mr. Chairman, this is the third and final reading for this, and it's a continuation of council's action to support existing industries. In the third and final reading, you reveal the name of the company, and this is Mohawk, Oak River Mills, we all are very familiar with and know how important they are to our community. So this is a continuation of the tax incentives, property tax incentives that they've had for thirty years. And you all have considered and approved these same sort of extensions for Domtar and Sopaco and other industries. So this is very important to allow them to be viable and continue to compete and be active in Marlboro County. As you have heard before, the South Carolina tax code is such that it's very difficult to be anywhere near what North Carolina and Georgia are. You have to do these agreements so that these companies can be competitive. So this is simply an extension of the agreement they had, which is going to set to expire. This is the third and final reading, and we would request that when you get to that part on the agenda that you approve that third and final reading.
Any questions? Okay, if it's not approved, that's not even a vote. Moving to approval amendments, we'll start with the March eighth, twenty twenty-two, the regular council meeting. I think the motion for approval, March twenty-second. All in favor? Need the approval amendment, March twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, all the meetings. Those are approved. Second, please. All in favor?
Mr. Chairman, I believe you were absent, weren't you? Were you absent from that meeting? Were you absent from that meeting? So he abstained. He needs another second.
Sarah Sessie?
Okay.
I'll give her another second. But all in favor? Moving to other businesses, ordinance eight twenty-two. Mr. Mullen?
Nothing else to add, Mr. Chairman?
This is the same ordinance we just had.
The same one you've just read out loud.
Moving on to...
Well, you do need to vote on it, though. Yeah, that's okay.
Second, seven. All in favor? I'm filed, ordinance eight two twenty-seven. An ordinance to adopt the annual budget to make appropriations for the Marlboro County for special year beginning July 22, twenty twenty-two, end of June, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. First reading, title only.
Stand up. Mr. Chairman, it's time again for our budget process that we do every year. Staff's been very busy trying to sharpen our pencils ahead of time. A lot of times in the past, we've come in and presented something to you, and then y'all told us to go back and sharpen our pencils, and this time we try to get ahead of it, sharpen it beforehand. And reason being is that, you know, there are a lot of expenses this year coming up that are unavoidable. We've had health insurance increases, retirement plan increases, and things like that. What's happened in the past three or four, five years is that you've had enough growth in revenue. Is that CETA or Tarzan, it sounded like it? We've had enough growth in revenue that it covers the next year, cost of living increases and things like that. And this year, we've had different things that have resulted in budget amendments during the year. So we've had about $250,000 in those for things that council deemed necessary. And once you take those out twelve months next year, you're talking about three and a quarter, $350,000. So you're kind of going into the budget this year, having eaten up some of that growth that you normally would use. So we'll have to look at that. The other thing is that when we have vacant positions or have turnover, that saves some money. And so that's always floating along, so even though you all budget to come out of the reserve, oftentimes you haven't had to because you've saved enough. Enough money has not been spent because of the vacancies. As you all have taken action to pay people better, to have good benefits, to make this a better place to work, we're seeing less and less vacancies. So you'll start to see that that money saved is not there as well. So all those things are kind of on the table as we begin to work on the budget. And I'll sit down in a second, and tonight we want to focus just on revenue. And then next week, we've got a workshop scheduled where we'll go deep dive into the expenses. I know that some new council members want to get down in that and see that. So one thing I did provide you with that's on your table are all the requests. So what we've done every year since I've been here, and we did it again this year, is we took last year's budget with any amendments, and we created a budget for next year, a starting point budget, that basically keeps providing the same level of surface, the same number of employees, the same everything for next year, and only add into that things that we cannot help, like the state charging another percentage point for retirement or health insurance, things that we can't avoid. So when we go to the workshop, you've got apples to apples. So this list are things from all different departments, all kinds of departments and functions of items that are some are needs, some are wants. We didn't staff it and put any comment on here. We didn't present any opinion or anything of this. This is for you all to see and to look at, and we'll discuss at the workshop. And we'll have department heads. I know the sheriff has a presentation to make and other folks as well at the workshop so you can hear, you know, what they see and what they're requesting. The top part of the sheet are things that can be handled with a one-time expense, and the ones at the bottom are things that will continue to go year and year and year. So we want to give you that ahead of time so you could be giving it some thought as we prepare for that workshop next week. So, all of that being said, our finance director, Wes Park, has a brief presentation on where our money comes from, our general fund money comes from, so you'll kind of understand that, and the public can see it as well. And it's going to be hard to figure out how to make this where everybody can see it. I don't know the best way to do this. I'll probably move out of the way, just this arrow right here.
All right, sure.
And I'm sorry for the public not being able to see as much as council, but that's just kind of out here. You don't see that somewhat? We'll get your copy.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, council members, Mr. Mundenland. I'm here tonight and going to talk a bit about general fund revenues, and this is, of course, through the upcoming budget year. As you can see, general fund revenues and other sources for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two were budgeted at $12,825,594. Estimated revenue and other sources for the upcoming fiscal year is $13,437,104 for an estimated increase of about $611,510. It's a little less than five percent increase. We look at the components of income. What is certainly most significant is general taxes, and you can see we're estimating approximately a $130,000 increase in general taxes. We're going to do a little deeper dive into that so you can get an idea of how, what makes up those general taxes. Fee and lieu, we've had some, fortunately, seen some continued economic development in terms of industrial, and that's about $191,000 increase there. One component that is of significance this year is something called Rural Stabilization Fund, and each of the counties that have seen less population growth are, have got a general allocation in this current year, about $300,000 plus a per-population amount. We estimate that's going to end up being about $325,000. So that's very significant when we look at the overall increase in terms of revenue for the upcoming fiscal year. The other categories, fees for services, fines, license fees, reimbursement revenue, those look to be fairly flat. So I'm going to go to the next slide. This is just give you kind of a little bit of a pictorial view of what those components look like in terms of revenue. As you can see, general taxes make up about a half of our overall county revenue, and if you combine general taxes, fee and lieu, and intergovernmental state, we've got about three-quarters of that revenue. The remainder of about twenty-five percent is, you know, comprised of fines, licenses, permits, library funding, reimbursement revenue, transfers, use of fund balance. And we've plugged in the same amount of use of fund balance so we can see this as being comparable with our current fiscal year. We look at general taxes. They're comprised of motorized, which effectively that's vehicles and motor carriers. This year, we anticipate an increase in that category by a little over $75,000. Real estate, we're anticipating about another $155,000 increase. When we look at local option sales tax, we've trimmed that estimate by a little less than $100,000. But overall, general taxes, we expect about $130,000 increase overall. So we've got state tax reimbursement is fairly close to the same number as in our current When we just look at that in terms of a chart, you can see that real estate makes up about half of that amount of the overall tax revenue. When you add the local option to that, that becomes about three-quarters of our tax revenue, and then the remainder of motorized and property tax, state reimbursement make up the remaining And I believe that is actually the end of the revenue presentation, but if you have any questions about this, and as we go through our budget process, I think we'll be looking back at the same presentation and do the same type of components for expenditures as well, so you can kind of see by broad categories what were actually part of the budget.
That rule allocation, is that part of the local government fund or is it...
It's in addition, but, you know, of course, what we've seen with the local government fund, we've seen a reduction over the years, and it's as if, I think what we've also seen in general is there's, I think, a real desire to try to aid some of our rural counties who haven't seen the type of growth in revenue and population. So this is, you know, really, it's really something in addition, but it's very similar to the local government fund.
So the local government fund and rule allocation, that's the intergovernmental and state fund is the way that's made up for that?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Do we have a tax increase for real estate? Is that what that...
Well, the presentation that we've included here is based on existing millage, so that does not...
So that would be new construction or new ventures?
Yes, and we've seen some growth in terms of, one of the things that's happened, too, is real estate, there's been a lot of sales of property. And of course, when property sells, and it sells for an amount higher than the existing assessed value, we've got a new assessment, and so we've seen some growth there just as a result of property transactions. So that has helped revenue, and probably anticipate that that'll continue. Are there any other questions? Ron, and everything else?
Just to cap it off, you know, this represents no increases, it's just as is. And I guess it's a good sign that you're seeing some more money come in off the same tax millage. That's what we want. And just so you know, as we get ready to go into the next workshop, you know, the thing I gave you a minute ago has, you know, about $2.5 million in requests. And right now, you know, apples to apples, we're about between six, probably closer to $700,000 out of reserve. If right now you said, do what you did, do what we have to do, don't change anything, just carry forward, increases next year, we could bring you a budget that'd be $700,000 out of the reserve. But as I've said before, it's been where, when we say we're coming out of the reserve, we typically save money along the way, and we don't have to do that. This time, I think the likelihood that you actually spend that money is greater. So you're in a situation where you've got to make some decisions. You haven't raised taxes in two or three years, I think, you have that ability to do that. The other thing that needs to be on your mind is that we are now on the third year of the solid waste roll cart contract, so the trash collection has come up, and they have the ability to increase that. Mr. Carabo's been working with them, and I think that that increase will have more numbers when we have the workshop, but it's not dramatic, and it's not unexpected considering fuel costs and all of that. So that'll be something that council has to deal with again, that happens every three years. And of course, with that contract we're looking at, do you do it for a year, or do you try to lock it in for three years? So you lock something in, you know, and you can do like we have. So there's some big topics to look at, discuss, and decisions to be made, and we'll be prepared at the next week to go into as much detail as you want to. If you have any questions tonight, or if you want to give me a call if something comes to mind during the week, just give me a call.
Yeah, I think we just, you know, that's a lot of increase for, at one time, you know, with inflation and everything's high, you know, we have to really consider the people on the fixed incomes, you know, $20 might not seem like a whole lot, but whenever your income's $1,200 and your expenses is $1,300 every month, you know, some people on fixed incomes have to really figure out what to do. So, you know, I know we have to move forward and real, you know, I think we're all about moving forward, but I think we just have to watch every penny we have this, you know, now, when, you know, people don't know about Easter eggs because they call, I mean, eggs to boil because they cost so much this year, you know, people on fixed incomes. I just think we really have to look at that, and so, you know, looking at these things, you know, I know probably everything's to give us where we need to be, but I think we still have to really look at everything, you know, sharpen your pencil, our pencils, whenever we get to go.
And you do have the equivalent millage that is required?
Yeah, I just made a column in there. Mr. Steen had mentioned that, you know, how much is, if you did that, how many mills is that? What's that, Mr. Truman?
You know, I was looking at the sheriff department's request, you've got that down twice, and I just wanted to know, what's that?
At the bottom?
At the bottom.
Oh, yeah, that's the type of, one of them's detention and one of them's sheriff's office. It's the officers you're talking about. That, one of those, the first one, or one of them's the sheriff's office, the other is the detention center, and they're both, the numbers are correct, just that one part's wrong. Good catch.
The total budget...
The bottom line?
Yeah, the bottom.
Yeah, everything's, all the numbers are correct, just that department line should say detention center.
Add that in.
And that includes the increase that we did.
Yes. Yeah, you know, of course, that's a lot of what you've got going on with everything, is anytime you give a cost of living, you know, it's going to roll twelve months next time. So when you do, you know, an overtime thing, or you do some stuff, you know, change some things like you're saying, then it's going to roll next year. Yes, sir, all that stuff roll forward.
I think this stuff was important. We had to do it to get to where we needed to be, so, yeah.
I think we have to do more.
Yep. So we'll be prepared, and if y'all have any questions, just let me know. And we do ask that y'all approve both of these items by title only, so that's just to get the three readings in the public hearing rolling. We've done that every year.
Okay, is there any other questions? Should we go in, vote for the first reading?
Make the motion if we approve it, and that's the first reading. Title only.
Second. All right, all in favor? All right, moving down to item B on five. Ordinance eight twenty-eight, an ordinance to approve the capital improvement plan for Marlboro County for the period of twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-seven. First reading, title only.
Same thing, we just ask that you approve it by title only.
And that's the top part of the sheet?
No, no, that's actually, it's, every year we try to have a schedule of things that we forecast we might need to replace. It's always a debate with staff of whether we even need this, but we've continued it. It's not the actual budget, it's only things that we think are coming.
I move we approve ordinance eight twenty-eight.
All right, all in favor? Item six, acceptance of bids. They have a bid, a proposal for partial demolition of the Delta Mill.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman and council, you all approved some time back that we seek grant funds from Department of Commerce to help with the Delta project. And so those funds were approved, and so we then went out for bid to demolish the parts of that facility, and it's basically the center plant and part of the front plant. So if you look back in your packet, we had a wide range of bids.
Is that in the book?
Yeah, it's back in here, but the low bid being 598,977. And of course, we had a bid as high as, you know, Doug up in West, we had a bid close to $2 million. So of course, when staff sees that, you know, our red flag goes up, and we want to make sure somebody didn't bid on something and miss a big part. But Mr. Carabo and Mr. Park and all of us have reviewed this, and the difference is that the company with the lower price is, doesn't have to use a middle man for the scrap metal, they'll get out of it. So they have more money they can recover from the scrap. So that determination, along with the fact that the contract we have with them will have a performance bond in it, meaning that if you award them this bid and they don't perform, then we can call in the bonding company and they will pay to finish the job. So that takes, you know, takes the most part of the risk out if you had an issue. That being said, we don't feel that there's any risk with this individual, this company. We've checked them out, and we feel good about it. And we're excited that it came in at that price, and we ask that in considering to approve this alloy company with a price of 598,977, that you allow us to use up to the million dollars that we got from grant funds from the state to do a little more in that vicinity. So we do a change order with the company and say, well, we didn't think we had enough money, but we want to take this little bit down, this little bit down. And we met with them today on that. So we're asking y'all to approve the recommendation of staff for the alloy group at 598,977, and also to approve staff expending up to $1 million of the grant funds to do some additional demo work in that vicinity.
Mr. Mundenland, if we do not use up to the million dollar limit, what...
I would go back to the state and try to amend it and use it for something else.
Okay.
We'll use it up there for something.
What's the square foot that they're putting on the milestone? Do you know that by chance?
Two hundred and fifty, two hundred and eighty?
Yeah, it's around 300,000.
Three hundred thousand square foot?
Yes, there's a plant two, the whole frame, on right inside, and the middle part, of course, on the plant three.
Does that include the smoke stack?
Well, we're trying to save the smoke stack. Everybody likes the smoke stack, so, no, not right now.
There's a couple more questions. I'd like to finally make a motion after about five or six years to approve the bid proposal for partial demolition of Delta Site.
Second. All right, all in favor? I think that was appropriate, you made that. All right, appointments to boards and commissions. Do we have any appointments to fill? Report, Wes Park, finance report?
You have the report in front of you. General fund revenues for the nine months ended March thirty-one, twenty twenty-two That is in comparison with the nine-month period ending March thirty-one, twenty twenty-one in the amount of $9,302,040. General fund expenditures through March thirty-one, twenty twenty-two totaled $8,485,555 of a $12,825,594 budget or 66.12% of budget year-to-date. Expenditures for the nine months ended March thirty-one, twenty twenty-one totaled $8,351,440. In summary, income is higher due to increases in state and local tax revenues. We talked a bit about that, that local stabilization fund that we weren't aware of at the time that the budget was adopted, and, you know, of course, we did receive that 300, roughly $325,000 in the current fiscal year. And expenditures are slightly higher for the same period to date, so I think we're tracking very well in terms of this budget year-to-date. I don't know if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer those.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Park? All right, moving on to the administrative report.
Mr. Chairman, for the start, I want to make note that Ms. Susan Rivers, who we all know has agreed to help us with the court to council duties, with Ms. Bundy, who's here shadowing her guidance, so we're getting her acclimated, it's been a while, but, you know, the principles are the same, and she's ready to help us, and we appreciate that. Every meeting we recognize folks, county employees with more than five years of service, and this month we have a few, Shante Redden with five years, Amber Goins with seven years, Ryan Oxendine with nine years, Tretia Burgess with twenty years, Kay Linder with twenty-two years, and Arthur Hamer with twenty-four years. So if you see any of these folks, please congratulate them on their service and thank them for their service. We have a couple of upcoming events, and I'll go in reverse over what you're looking at. The first thing is the Association of Counties Conference, which for a million years at least has been held at Hilton Head every August, has been now moved to the Isle of Palms. So those of you who went down there and to take the classes and all that last year, didn't have a real pleasant experience in Hilton Head, and the Association of Counties went out and found another conference center to have it. They also changed it now to where it runs from Monday to Thursday. You know, it used to run kind of Saturday to Tuesday or Wednesday. So they've changed... You know, it used to run kind of Saturday to Tuesday or Wednesday, so they changed that as well. We have reserved spots for everybody on council, and we'll be, uh, Ms. Rivers will be helping me reach out to all of you to, uh, see which classes you want to attend, and there should be a handout in your packet, if not, we'll get you one of the classes available and the other, um, sessions and all that they're having that, that, uh, week. So it, a little different, makes it a little harder for folks working, you know, to get down there, um, but we didn't really have any control over it. It's a little bit, I think a little bit closer, maybe an hour. By the second, second event, which is very important, is next week, the recreation, uh, consultant's presentation, and, uh, that's planned for four o'clock on Tuesday, and we held over at the Sky, so we have enough room. So they'll be there to present what they've found, what they've heard, uh, options, uh, basic cost operating and upfront cost of different options, and be prepared, they will be prepared to discuss it, answer hard questions and easy questions. And from that, of course, staff hopes to have some direction that we can then take forward and start to, uh, to work towards whatever we, we come out of that with. Uh, immediately following the recreation, um, presentation will be a council work session, probably start around five-thirty, and we'll have some snacks and all brought in, because it'll be a long session. Um, so, again, if you have anything in particular, um, that, uh, questions or any information you'll want for that, that meeting, the workshop about the budget, please let me know so I can prepare and get you that ahead of time or have it ready for the meeting. So those two things are going on. I don't have a very long report this week, because we've, we've met a couple of times. Uh, Spec Building update, I'm happy to report that they've almost finished the fourth wall. So if you ride out there, um, you'll see, maybe by this afternoon, that all the walls are standing, and it's very impressive to see it, you know, it's, it's easy to, to talk about it, but when you ride out there and you actually see it, um, it's, it's a good thing. And I'm working already with NISA and the Com, Department of Commerce to start to market the building. A lot of communities have found that they've sold or found people that wanna come in to these buildings before they even finished the building. So, uh, the next challenge is gonna be, I think, is to try to decide who, who you want to put in it. You know, who, who's bringing the most to the community? Do you want someone that wants the building to hire five people to run a warehouse, or somebody to hire fifty or seventy-five people? So that'll counsel what, hopefully, I have some tough decisions to make. I think it will move very quickly. People out there in the world looking for these type things don't wanna get into, um, having to construct anything with the way things are, you know, the prices are all going back and forth, so I'm, I'm really looking forward to, uh, to having those tough decisions or having that information bring to council for you all to look at. Aside from Spec Building, we're still working on two active projects, um, and that together they equal about a hundred and twenty-five million dollars in investment. Um, they both involve existing industries, but are big expansions of existing industries. So we're, uh, we're still in the running for those, and working, we're spending a lot of hours, particularly on one of them, to try to make it work. We're, um, competing with another state on one of them, and that's difficult with the tax code in South Carolina. But we all have discussed this in the executive session and trying to make an aggressive, uh, proposal there. We also, uh, went out and got an appraisal on the Boro site, which is something that really needs to be used or, or someone get. Um, it came in at about three hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars for the entire site. Um, we have someone interested in that, um, seemingly really interested in that, so, um, my hope is that I'll have information on that to bring to you all, first in executive session, and then to be able to go and take action. Um, we've also, as far as Boro goes, had what's called a sound survey done along the boundaries, because it does, it does, uh, touch on neighborhoods. And you, you know, I don't think council wants to put something noisy in there, you know, you wanna know where the sound is now and be able to limit that if you were to let someone purchase it with that restriction. The final thing I had was the Eastside School. Um, we have engaged a company called BBG Assessments. They're a leading national company that does full assessments of buildings, everything from environmental to conditions to, uh, renovate or, or keep part or, or not keep part, tear down part, they'll do all of that. And they're coming next week, and I am promised that they'll have a response within a week after when they come. So this company is completely independent, we've never done business with them, um, I found them through some engineers, you know, that, that said they were the ones to use. So we have an objective assessment of the building. Um, so that's all I had for the report tonight, I can answer any questions.
Eastside, uh...
Yes.
The Eastside, uh, project, where they're gonna come, they'll be, they'll be by themselves, or will somebody, uh...
They, uh, they come in, um, with their people, it's usually an engineer-type person, and they requested, you know, access, which the school district has said, no problem, and a ladder, and, you know, things like that, but they'll come in, um, they don't, we don't have to chaperon them, they'll come in and do their thing. Um, and, and my opinion is, I think that's better, you know, let them come in, we'll have our maintenance person in the, in the, uh, schools maintenance person there to make sure they can see everything, but it'll be completely objective. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Mullen. We have before us the recognition of, uh, citizens. Uh, first up will be Ms. Pearlie Lawson.
Good evening, members of the council, Mr. Chairman, and special guests, Sheriff McNeil, ladies and gentlemen, and everyone. And I'm here to report about Marlborough County Clean and Green Event Pickup that was held, um, last Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday in the communities of State Street, State Street Extension, Chapel Street, Arrow Street, Marshall Street, and fifteen four oh one bypass. I want to report that on, just on State Street itself, we were able to pick up, and I say "we," it's Parker, Julie Parker and her son, Nick Clark, we were able to pick up thirty-two bags of trash from that area. On Chapel Street and Arrow Street, we were able to pick, I was able to pick up ten bags. Unfortunately, I didn't have the volunteers who did come out, they called to say that they were gonna come and out, but because I'm a woman of my word, I continue on with the effort. And on, uh, Marshall Street, was able to pick up thirteen bags of trash, for a total of fifty-five bags of trash, just to keep Marlborough County clean and green. I think this is a great countywide effort for every community, not just the Benetton area, but for every community to do this. I want to thank Mr. Mullen for the supplies. We're willing to use all the supplies and have additional supplies for upcoming efforts. Also want to thank the environmental team for coming back and pick up those bags. It was a very fruitful event. Want to say that if we, when I say we, all of us in Marlborough County, take the time to pick this trash up, our county will look better, and that's what we want to do, work together to make our county look better. So I want to say, um, thanks to everyone who came out, and especially want to give recognition to Mr. Venice Parnell Jr. for taking an initiative to cut a lot so that I can get to that area on Marshall Street that faces right at that bypass, and those are kinds of things that we are concerned about, how our fifteen four oh one bypass is looking. So again, I thank you so very much, Mr. Mullen and the team for giving us the supplies. We're gonna use those, and hopefully within the next two months, we'll have another big cleanup in any community that would like to do this. I have some supplies, but I know Mr. Mullen have lots more, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lawson. Uh, next up is Devonte Bennett.
Hey, good evening, everybody. My name is Devonte Bennett, and I'm here on behalf of the PD Coalition. So of course, the PD Coalition, a non-profit organization in the area that focuses on reduction of, of sexual assault and child abuse in the community, and of course, that's to help the victims that come to the house and also the ones that are hurt. So the main things that I wanted to speak about are some of that, this is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, so we have some, uh, events that we do each week, and one for this week is our lemonade stand, and we'll be doing it on Thursday, and we also have Women's Self-Defense Training on Saturday. So if you guys will come out, we're happy to have that.
Now where's the lemonade stand?
It's Thursday, it'll be starting at two p.m. At, uh, one way, partially.
Okay, all right.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Uh, next up is, uh, Ms. Julia Kane.
Good evening, and I'm, thank you all, I'm to the chairman, to the board members. Mr. Mullen, thank you all so much for giving me an opportunity to come before you. I'm also with the PD Coalition, I'm a board member, and we, I'm just here with Ms. Brenda Dixon, we want to come as board members to thank you for everything you've done so far in the past to support this effort that we have with the PD Coalition. Um, we would like to thank you for several years you have given us five thousand dollars, and we are looking so forward to that again this year, so I just want to stand before you and say thanks to all of you for what you do. I know you're talking about your budget, so please keep us in mind as you go through your budget, and we welcome more. I mean, you know, we don't want you to just stop at five thousand, we'll welcome anything you give us, so, please support us as we support this community to do what we need to do. We have two sites, we have our Satellite Crisis Center that is on one oh eight Placene Street, and we have the New Beginnings Transitional Shelter, which is at thirty-six fifteen Hickson Rowan. So please come out and visit our sites and see what we're doing to help the community. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Julia. Uh, recognition to council members, we'll start with, uh, Ms. Corwate.
I don't have too much to say, but I would like to say that, uh, thank Mr. Dixon and them for the jobs that they're doing. Keep holding on to what you're doing, it's, it's doing real well.
Thank you.
Yeah, uh, also, Ms. Lawson, I'd like to commend you, you said you picked up fifty-five bags? Oh, my Lord, very big, that's some work, that's some work, but I commend you also on the job you done. I was coming down State Street and coming in town, and I saw all those bags laying over there, I said, "Good Lord, who picked all those bags up?" I mean, it was a bunch of them, and all that on that main highway here, she really worked, I tell you, she called me one night, she said, "Ah," I said, "What's the matter?" She said, "I'm out of there, I'm tired." I said, "I bet you are with all the bags you fit." I, but, but she's a hard worker, she's a hard worker, and she's dedicated worker. You've got some people that say they'll do things, and they, on the back burner, they won't do nothing, but if you've got somebody that says they're gonna work and do something and stick to it, you got, you got, you got a good, good person that will stick to what they wanna do and get it done, and that's what we need in Marlborough County. We need more people that's dedicated and concerned about the people in Marlborough County. And, uh, but she, she's done a wonderful job, and, and I'm really admiring her, and, uh, everything else that people do here in Marlborough County, that, that, even the police, they done a wonderful job. And, uh, it's, it's just wonderful to have people that work together and put it together to get things done in Marlborough County, Lord knows the way things going. Now, we need to work together, there's no separating, it's need coming together and working, and we can get, I think my mama used to have a saying about you can catch more flies with, well, how do things go, you catch more flies with hunting than you can with vinegar? I think that's what my mom, but anyway, if you come together, you can do more together than you can apart. Don't talk about it, let's get together and do it. And I really wanna commend everybody for the job that they're doing, with what they're doing, and, uh, I just say, keep on doing, keep, keep praying and hoping for the best, 'cause things will sooner or later turn around and get better for us. All right, I think that's enough.
Council, Ms. Strowman?
Um, don't have much to say, just, um, thanks, you know, Mr. Mullen for your guidance and, um, all your leadership that you're, you're showing and getting things done, you look at the, the budget and the stuff, and it's, you know, I know it's difficult, I know it's difficult, but, uh, keep us straight. Um, Ms. Lawson and Ms. Bundy, uh, I wish you all much success in your, the upcoming elections. Uh, you know, you know, um, I know both of you are hard-working, hard-working women, and, uh, when you see women coming up, and I, and, you know, I'm a, I'm a man, so, you know, we're, we're, we're slacking, but you see these women coming up and doing amazing things, and very strong-minded women, uh, and you have my support, so, um, I wish you much luck. Chief, uh, Sheriff McNeil, I always wanna call you chief, you know, but, uh, Sheriff McNeil, thank you for the jobs that you, that you're doing. Uh, to the Lord have mercy, I don't know what's going on in, in, I would say the county, but it's not only Marlborough County, it's, it's, it's all over, and the challenges that you all face with a very limited budget that, that we provide for you right now, you know, I don't see how you do it, hopefully we can, we can work on that and we see fit, we can do better, you know? Uh, that will be it.
Okay.
Uh, just, uh...
Mr. Steen?
Picking back on Mr. Strowman, you know, the ones that's running, like I said, I know it's a tough battle, so I wish you the best of luck. Uh, like I said, I, I have to catch myself to saying, Sheriff, I've called him chief so long, thank y'all for the hard work that you and your staff's doing, uh, you know, if you, if you keep, watch the television or Facebook or whatever, you know, there's always, you know, stopping the bad guys, you know, the only way for, for, they don't watch the old saying, you got men on those old sayings, for, for, uh, evil man be stopped, for a good man to stop him, I mean, so, uh, like I said, thank y'all for the hard work you, you, you're doing, uh, like I said, you know, it, it does not go unnoticed, so we see it and hear it, and so we thank you for it, uh, like I said, and, uh, you know, just thank everybody for the hard work, Ms. Dixon, Ms. Klein, thank y'all for what y'all do with the women's shelter, and so, uh, Mr. Mullen, I know it's been about six, seven years working on a, a Delta project, I didn't never think was ever gonna, uh, come to the path, so, you know, it's, you know, every time I ask and ask and ask, and we're trying, 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 so Mr. Carbo's working on it, and, you know, I'm, I'm looking forward to, hopefully in the next few days or weeks, we can actually see some, I almost say we'll need a ribbon cutting up there, it's been so long, but, uh, thank you for, uh, the hard work, and, uh, like I said, I'm looking forward to, hopefully that thing can get back rejuvenated and, uh, somebody come in there and rent it and, you know, get it back to where it used to be. One of the gateways in our county, you know, whenever you, a lot of beach traffic comes into that way, it used to be the business intersection in the, in the county was Highway, uh, one and nine there, so there was, the traffic out there was higher than anywhere else in the county, so, you know, everybody comes down that way, so we wanna keep, get it, you know, nice, and, Ms. Pearlie, thank you for picking up all that trash, you know, uh, you know, it's, it's everywhere, you know, you almost might need a full-time crew just, just picking up trash just to keep it going, you know, if you pick it up today, they'll, they'll throw it out tomorrow, I mean, and so then you, you, you work, you almost feel like you knocked in the face, but we thank you for it, so, that's all I have.
Just like, uh, echo, everybody said, and, um, and also that, uh, a couple meetings ago, I crawled up off, uh, Salem Road and Cox Road in Fairytown, where she had a dangerous accident, and, uh, since then, we've had another fatality, it was a senior in school year, and, um, I think, uh, Sheriff McKnight, McNeil, excuse me, I'm sorry.
That was a combination.
Long way aboard.
Yeah, I'm, I'm still thinking chief, too. But anyway, uh, and I think that, uh, Sheriff McNeil, you, you checked with the DOT, didn't you, did you meet them down there yet?
I talked with, um, with Highway Safety.
Okay.
And they're supposed to be trying to get something down there.
Okay.
I will follow up, but I have thoughts on Highway Safety, who's responsible for, yes, on Highway.
Okay, okay, yeah, and I, I thank you for that, I knew that, uh, Sheriff called me and talked me in, he was gonna check into that, and, uh, I really appreciate that, I mean, something got to be going on, it's too much, too often, and, um, you know, I just appreciate, uh, Sheriff for checking into that and, and that extra mile right there, I really appreciate that, and that's really all I got.
Sheriff McNeil, would you like to say a word? I hate to put you on the spot, if, if you got something...
I'm there on the spot. I can't work for this job. This is only an update, uh, kinda let you know where we are, what we're doing. Um, as of now, we, since our last meeting, we've had two officers to graduate from the academy, uh, we have three that should graduate next Friday. And first, I need to thank you, uh, Chairman, for allowing me to speak, and the board as well, the council as well, and, uh, Mr. Mullen, uh, we have three that should graduate next week, we have one that's in school, should graduate in four weeks, and one that's waiting to go to school, I think he should leave in about three weeks, four weeks, and one more that should be leaving then. We are right now only three people short, we were just one short, we lost two in, in our process, and that happens. Um, we have, um, when it comes to, we're waiting on quotes right now for the vehicles from the Enterprise, we've already started that process, so I wanna thank Ms. Carbo for getting, helping us get that done. Uh, we've filled two, the two positions that you allowed us to get with SROs, we've filled both of those positions, so now we'll have four SROs in our school district, uh, so, in our areas. Uh, we're waiting on the signs for the body-worn cameras, we're just waiting on for the signing of the PO, uh, that's ready, we're ready, uh, I know our folks need those body, um... I know our folks need those body, the cameras. We need them real bad. And I thank you for the work that you're doing to get that done. But that's something that we need. We just started a new system. It's called Victims Notification System. And it has to do with making sure that every victim, if you're, if you're a victim of, of any type of accident and normally it has to do with domestic violence, normally there's always a problem trying to get everybody the information they need, trying to get it to court, trying to get it to solicitor's office, the magistrate's office, and making sure that the victim gets what they're needing. But they need, what we've done, we have, now have a, a system in place, a software in place, that once the officer goes to a victim and once the incident report is done, then that information is disseminated to all parties that have anything to do with it. Automatically, it goes to everybody's phone. So everybody will get that information as soon as they need it. And what it gives, it gives the date of the incident, the date of the bond, the time, the place of the bond, where the bond will be, the bond hearing, a case number. The officer will get it, who's working as well as the suspect's name, that'll all, that'll all be given to a victim just by a push of a button as opposed to us trying to hand-deliver stuff. Saves paper, saves time, and nobody can't say that they didn't get it. That's the most important part. Body run vest, we're preparing a policy now for the vests and that's a reimbursement that, a fifty percent reimbursement that the county will get back once we finish that. The cap is working on the policy now. I would say it would be finished by the end of this week. The radio grant has been already, we've already submitted the grant for the radios. We're hearing back from DPS on that. Training, we just, we're about to start on CPR. None of our guys are certified in CPR. So we're about to do that as well. We're having active shooter training in the county. And the school district will be partnering with us to do the CPR as well as the active shooter training. So we're partnering with the school district to get that done. We just finished Norcan training. There's a high volume of overdoses in, in, in the PD when it comes to drugs. Now, all of our officers are certified to, to give Norcan. And that's just something to revive somebody who's going into overdose. Obviously, you can give them Norcan and that'll bring them back. As well as CAP scan, you may be aware that I've said earlier that we've taken away the tasers from all the officers. There's nothing there in our continuum to use other than a weapon. And we need more than that. So we just train all the people to be able to use CAP scan. That's just MACE, but it's highly effective to do that. We've just started a computer-based program, a training with LexiPole. That's going to help us with our training here in-house as opposed to going to the academy and different places. There's now a cost every time you go to the academy for, for housing. So if somebody has to go someplace for a week for training, that's a hundred plus, almost two hundred dollars a night that we have to spend on lodging. By doing LexiPole and doing what we are doing, and all of this stuff is based at the academy, that we do get credit for it from the academy. So we're going to start doing, starting next week, we'll be doing our own training in-house. Well, most of the training, not all. But the majority of what we get trained for, the things we have to do can be done now online. So that's a huge saving for us. As far as the detention center, I believe after Monday, the twenty-fifth, they should only be one person short as far as staffing. So we, the one who's done a good job in getting his staff back where it needs to be, so they'll only be one person short, hopefully after Monday. And the application that we're working on for the federal prisoners, that's way on the way. We're getting close to getting that finished, thanks to Mr. Park and giving us the information that we needed for that. And that's where we are.
Sheriff, thank you for your good work in, in your department.
Well, I, I wish I could take credit, but it's those people that are working that, that deserves the credit. They're really doing all the work. I'm just sitting behind the desk talking.
Well, you've got a good team there.
We've got a good team. We got a great team of people.
Is that the new look?
That's the new look. If you're going to be professional, you need to look the part. It changes how people think and see and look at you in a different manner just by walking up to them. It does make a difference. Thank you.
All I'd like to add is I would like to welcome Susan Rivers to, to the staff. And it's certainly good to have you and certainly good to see Patricia Bunny here. I'd like to wish you and Ms. Lawson a good election and a good campaign. So good luck. I'd like to thank Ron and Wes for, for y'all's hard work on the budget. I know that's taken numerous of hours or weeks and years, you know, but thank you for your work on that. And that is all I have. Do we have a motion to adjourn? In a second. All in favor? We stand adjourned.